Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August 10th, 2020 Board of Education meeting for Evanston Township High School. The Board of Education is meeting remotely in accordance with Section 6 of the Illinois Executive Order issued March 16th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
La Daye Livingston.
Here.
Monsell.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Rolowitz. The Terich. Savage Williams.
Here. Thank you. All right, so let's go with our agenda. The first such, the first item on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Babus, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this morning.
Sort of morphs with the next item on the agenda. Which is public comments, comments from the public. And we asked pub- public comments to be submitted in writing, which is why it seems like written communication. Prior to the meeting, um, we have an email and asked that these comments be submitted by 6:00 a.m. This morning, Monday, August 10th. So do we have any, um, public comments to share?
Yes, we have six, and I will read those into the record.
Okay.
Our first one.
Oh, oh, go ahead. I was gonna ask that, that since if we were, if we were present, we would spend three minutes listening to each person. So, um, I'd just like us to, I'll, I'll time it. I'm used to timing. I do that for my seed work. So.
Sounds good.
Go ahead.
And, uh, Madam President, and if, uh, Pete gets beyond the three minutes, since we're in writing, I can assure everybody, we will make sure that all board members, uh, receive, uh, the comments.
Yes, that's great. Thank you. So we will all receive all the comments. Yes, thank you. Okay.
Ready? Uh, my first word. All right, so we, uh, our first public comment is from Ann Forden. "To the District 202 Boarded Administration, I would like to make two points supporting the reinstatement of marching band color guard for the policies. First, I would like to identify the social emotional learning, uh, as defined by ISB Performance Descriptors of Social Emotional Learning that students will not experience this fall with the cancellation of marching band color guard. Two B, recognizing individual and group similarities and differences. Stage 1.5, evaluate efforts to provide members of various groups with opportunities to work together to achieve common goals. Stage 1.7, develop and maintain positive relationships with peers of different genders, races, and ethnic groups. Stage J. 7, demonstrate an ability to work well with always of different ethnic groups and religions. Two C, use communication and social skills to interact effectively with others. Stage 1.5, apply goal-setting skills in helping a group develop action steps for achieving a group goal. Stage 1.6, develop criteria for evaluating success and completion, action steps, and goals achievement. Stage J. 6, demonstrate ways one can move group efforts forward. For example, providing structure, guidelines, or ideas, supporting others' ideas. Secondly, the exclusion of marching band on the governor's list of sanctioned sports leading to the cancellation of marching band was likely an oversight due to the artistic nature of the activity. The social distance outdoor practice of marching band color guard is no more risky than the practice of low-risk sports identified by IHSA. I'm looking forward to the District 202 School Board and Administration to correct this oversight and to support the arts and marching band guard this fall, just as they are supporting golf, tennis, cross-country, swimming, and diving. Sincerely, Ann Fordon and Juan Campbell Verde." Our second, uh, public comment is from Lee Pearlstad. "My name is Lee Pearlstad, and I am the parent of a sophomore percussionist. I'm requesting that the decision to cancel ETHS marching band color guard outdoor rehearsals this fall be reversed. I would like to be clear that our marching band color guard community is only asking to continue sectional, small-group rehearsals on outdoor fields while following the ETHS safety guidelines. We are not asking to do performances, parades, games, or competitions. Even high school sports identified by the governor as high-risk are allowed. Level 1, no contact, practice, and training only. We are just asking for equitable considerations since marching band also falls under IHSA. Dr. Witherspoon and Dr. Campbell have repeatedly stated that supporting social and emotional learning is one of the most important goals this year. Allowing these rehearsals to continue is giving the group of students a low-risk way to meet outdoors, collaborate, connect, exercise, relieve stress, and make music. I feel that the ETHS has done a great job of not putting more value on sports than on, uh, the arts, but I think the message is not coming through right now. Uh, I heard multiple band kids leaving rehearsal last Friday saying, quote, 'They think sports are more important,' close quote, and quote, 'The only thing we're important if we play at football or basketball games,' close quote. A lot of kids are training to be in college marching bands, just as some of our athletes are training to participate in college athletics. Their mistime means just as much. My family is very COVID-conservative, and we feel this is one of the few activities that is actually very low-risk. The band leadership has done an amazing job of running these outdoor rehearsals with a strict adherence to all the safety standards given to them, uh, even more rigorous than I've seen, uh, with the other sporting activities going on in ETHS. They have been educating our kids on how to respect the dangers and do the right thing to keep themselves and the community safe. Please let, let's then continue this opportunity while the weather is nice because it'll likely be a long winter. Thank you for your time and consideration." Our next public comment is from Molly Martin. "Hello, I would like to make a comment to the School Board on August 10th regarding marching band color guard. If you not feel a decision to make all arts programs virtual is appropriate. One, the bottom line is that this is a misinterpretation of the governor's recommendation. Banning all arts is the easy way out. It is not a requirement based on what the governor said. Marching band and color guard can practice safely in the fall. By the way, marching band can be considered a sport based on IHSA. Two, some athletics are continuing. To cut all arts across the board is unfair, providing opportunity and advantages unequally. The bottom line is use a scalpel, not a hatchet. If you require verbal approval from the governor, then fine, we'll work to get it. This is Evanston. You know we can, but we really shouldn't have to. We all want the same thing, a healthy, safe environment for our children and teaching staff. Allowing marching band, color guard to practice in the fall will not compromise the safety of anyone. Instead, it will contribute to the well-being of many. My credentials for the above are, first of all, being the parent of three ETHS students. I'm also a pediatrician at UIC. I mainly do public health work. I have served on advisory boards for the state regarding health policy, and I advise the Chicago Public Schools. Just two weeks ago, I was in discussion with them regarding COVID and associated asthma health policy. Molly A. Martin, M.D., M.A.A.P." Uh, our fourth public comment is from Nancy Radner. Uh, "As a dear 202 Board, as I am sure you are aware, a large group of parents issued a letter asking Superintendent Witherspoon, District 202, to reconsider suspending marching band and color guard for the fall. The response we received from Dr. Witherspoon referenced the July 29th announcement by Governor Pritzker about restrictions for recreational sports in schools. What Dr. Witherspoon said is that the governor, is that because the governor failed to specifically mention marching band or color guard in his July 29th announcement, the governor instead intended that it should be conducted virtually, but this is entirely inaccurate interpretation. Governor Pritzker was specifically listing the sports that were being restricted. A more logical interpretation then is that all sports were unrestricted, or at the very least, the governor was leaving it up to the districts to decide what to do. That would be in line with, uh, the fact that it's up to the districts to decide whether to hold school in-person or virtually. Illinois, as a home rule state, allows local governments to self-govern as much as possible. What this means is that District 202 is taking an accurate position. It is not the governor has decided to issue the district. He has left it for us to decide. District 202 is deciding not to make a decision. And frankly, this lack of leadership is surprising from a district with a history of meeting students' needs with innovation and distinction. The district has decided that safety of the students requires them to be separate, even when the actual risk of exposure to COVID, as in the circumstances, is very low. I'm trying to make an admittedly challenging decision. I would urge District 202 to take a broader look at what, uh, can be surmised about, uh, operating marching band color guard programs. Some guidance exists in the letter subject by the parents. Another place to look for is the governor's July 29th statement, uh, at the list of sports. It can be reasonably argued that the closest analogy to marching band color guard would be sideline spirit, where participants stand six feet apart and do not do, with no stunts or lifts. This sport is specifically categorized as low-risk, which would allow for practice scrimmages and interleague play. For all these reasons, a faulty assumption by the governor's directive, plus a failure to look at the full circumstances surrounding the operational marching band and the risks it presents, I urge District 202 to reassess this decision to continue marching band and color guard. Sincerely, Nancy Radner." Our fifth, uh, public comment is from Rhonda Hartland. "So much of high school experience revolved around band. Of my high school experience revolved around band. When my kids became school age, I couldn't wait for them to learn to play their instruments. It wasn't much, uh, the academic benefit of learning to play an instrument that was important to me, but rather the social emotional benefits. My daughter was thrilled when her instrument arrived. She couldn't wait to have her own band camp stories. As an incoming freshman, she was filled with fear and anxiety. The last few days, those fears have melted and given birth to pure joy. This is until the news of it being canceled has brought devastation and sadness to her school. She has lost the excitement of the first day for her, quote, 'Today isn't a gr- isn't a great day to be a Wildcat,' close quote. Just bring it back. The kids, the school, the community needs to hear the drums of the Wildcats. Thanks, Rhonda." Our sixth public comment is from Katie Drew. "My name is Katie Drew. I'm an incoming sophomore at Evanston Township High School. Uh, as everyone of my fellow students, my life has been completely turned upside down since March 13th, 2020. For nearly five months, I have not seen my friends. I have not been able to leave my house without a mask, nor have I been able to participate in activities that one might think a teenager would do during a beautiful Chicago summer. This summer, I was supposed to be a volunteer camp counselor at a camp in Wisconsin, a swim instructor at ETHS Learn to Swim program, hanging out with friends in the sun, et cetera. But what I was looking forward to most was being part of the Wildcat marching band. Last year, as a freshman, I played the marimba in our Rocky marching show. I grew as a musician, leader, and as a person in multiple grueling weeks of band camp. It was probably the most fun I'd had in my life. And as activities began to shut down in the spring of 2020, my heart sank. For the annual Fourth of July parade was, first, the annual Fourth of July parade was canceled. Then overnight camp was gone as well. And then the front, uh, and then the front ensemble that I played the previous year was dissolved. But I kept thinking to myself, at least there will be some semblance of experience that I could point to. During the past two weeks of band camp at ETHS, nothing has been the same with masks, temperature checks, and strict social distancing. But in this past two weeks, I have smiled more than I have in the past five months. I cannot speak for the rest of the band, but for those that I have spoken to, every single person felt the same. But then on August 7th, we all received word that the season was effectively canceled. We're no longer able to continue our rehearsals or in-person activities at all. The last shred of normalcy and hope that I had been planning to have been shattered in the 250-word email from the band director. I do not cry at small things. I have an impeccable ability to hold myself together, but after I got home, I sobbed. My frustrations and the decisions are simple. Because marching band does not follow their IHSA, we were explicitly okay to go forward with the season, not explicitly okay to go forward with the season as have other similarly risk, uh, risk sports. However, our band has strictly followed the IHSA ISB and Illinois Department of Health Guidelines for return of sports and activities and a few issues, and we do not hold more risk to the community than being together than approved sports. It is frustrating to me that fine arts and clubs are being unequivocably canceled. That is an opportunity for each of us to be evaluated for risk and to add accommodations for those unprecedented times we are living in. Contrasting with Dr. Witherspoon's statement given to my fellow band members, we share similar concerns. The governor has not given an explicit no to activities such as marching band and other low-risk clubs. In the same statement, Dr. Witherspoon mentions that our band program is important and valuable to ETHS, but I ask, when will we become more valuable than the inconvenience of making a plan to protest those important programs? When will we become more valuable than the lazy answer of just saying no? ETHS prides itself on advocating for student mental health, but in my opinion, this decision is a huge slap in the face of students who have been clinging to the possibility of having some of their activities that would directly better their mental health. There is no reason why activities such as marching band, which pose little risk to public health, when combined with up-to-date safety precautions, have to be completely discarded and not given an opportunity to succeed. The mental health of students does not deserve neglect as, uh, as has been thus far. At the very least, I encourage the board to reevaluate this decision. Again, thank you so, so much. I really appreciate your time. I'm sure you're very busy. Katie Drew." And that concludes, uh, this morning's public comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for reading those.
May I, may I add just a little bit of clarity? The governor did not cancel marching band, nor did we. We have never planned on a fall marching band season, ever, and we've never committed to that. We made a decision that we are going to be virtual in the fall. Putting 160 people on the field at this time is not a risk that we're willing to take. Period. But it's totally consistent with our decision that we are virtual in the fall. The governor threw us a curveball. After we had made that decision, he directed that certain sports would go on. So we have, we have willingly done what the governor directed, but we had not approved those sports either. I just want to make that clear. That is not something that ETHS approved. Our, our plan is and remains to keep this school safe and to stay on virtual in the fall. Marching band season has been moved with the, with, with the football season. We'll hope we can have it. There's a spring football season. That's when the marching band will be. We hope. We hope. We don't know what spring will be, but we do know that that's when the marching band performs. We, we don't have any half-times coming up the, 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 this fall. Uh, you know, we're not, we are not allowing any spectators at any of those sports the governor approved. Not one. So there won't be any spectators. So, so, so while we never canceled it, we pushed it into the spring, just like we have pushed the, the other, uh, activities. But again, I, I want to clarify, and it's important. We have not canceled it. We have, we have been 100% consistent, and we have a lot of activities in this school. A lot of them. And they are all going to have to be, uh, and co-curricular. And they are all going to have to be virtual this fall. And believe me, I am, I, I, I know no more than anybody else, but I think we're in for a very, very difficult fall. And I don't want us to see a contagion, a, an outbreak at this school, and we become the next school that all of a sudden has a surge, uh, and, and our students and families are getting infected. So I do want to point that out, because I think that there was a reverse understanding. No, the governor did not cancel it. The governor threw us a curveball because he directed us to do some activities that we had no intention of doing. And thank you for letting me clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, um, Dr. Witherspoon. That, that's really important. And I know that we'll be talking, um, about this a little bit more when we discuss the reopening plan and, um, some of the, um, guiding principles around making the decisions that we've made regarding, uh, keeping our students and our staff and our community safe. It's really very important. So it's just an unusual, unprecedented, odd time. We, we don't have any, we don't have anything, um, that helps us be ready for what we're about to face. Stephanie's in the waiting room, so thank you, Gretchen. Um, William, can you let her in?
Yeah, I can't let her in because I'm.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, I'll let her know. Okay, um, let's keep going. Yeah, here she is. Great.
Looks like she's connecting.
Yes, she is connected, so I don't have to, I don't have to text her. I can't multitask anyway. It's really hard for me to do that. Okay. Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you.
We just finished public comments, and we are at FOIA. Item number six. Um, Dr. Babus, we do have one, two, three, four, five listed. Um, any comments about any of them or any questions from the board? So, okay. All right, so they're pretty self-explanatory. So item number seven, items for information. The first one is the big one. Update on fall opening, um, and school requirement.
That's not the most recent, uh, agenda, Miss Savage Williams, but, but you're on the right, you're on the right item. It's number eight, and it's approval of COVID-19 reopening.
Yeah, right.
But, so same topic. I just, I don't want people who.
You're right. That's exactly right. I, I printed this a couple of days ago, and I do.
Right, sorry about that. I apologize.
So, I'm gonna just open my agenda. Let's see, I had it open here. Okay, yes. Item number eight is approval of COVID-19 reopening plan, uh, resolution. Um. Dr. Witherspoon, do you want to talk?
Yeah, let, let, let me quickly give a summary.
Yeah.
So, uh, Board, as you know, you, uh, we presented to you the framework for our reopening plan, uh, at your last board meeting. And, and we had, recommended by our attorneys, uh, the COVID-19 reopening resolution. But we asked you at that point to only approve the framework, because we had not completed all the details, and, and, and that, that upcoming Friday, uh, we were, we were going to release the written plan. And, 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 and so, uh, what you have in front of you now is to, to pass that resolution for the plan, not the framework of the plan. Uh, nothing actually has changed since the framework, except one thing. And that is, uh, we were anticipating at that time that we, uh, would, would be trying to, uh, open this to the hybrid model, which is in this plan, uh, that we were planning, hoping to open to that, uh, following Labor Day. Uh, in the, in just those few short intervening days, uh, between discussing the framework and, uh, and, and issuing the plan, uh, a lot happened. There was a major outbreak of, of 36 students, uh, in, in just a small, uh, sports camp, uh, three sports camps, uh, up in Lake Zurich, who, who all tested positive, uh, and, and actually resulted in some additional surge in that, in that community. We had put the framework out on purpose, because, uh, before we came with the plan, we wanted to get feedback. Uh, and, and we got, uh, feedback from our employees, uh, that they, you know, they would come in, but they were scared to death. And at the same time, we all of a sudden started seeing surges, even just in those couple, three days, surges, uh, across the country. And so we really realized that our plan, uh, was solid. It, it includes e-learning, and, and then it includes a hybrid. It includes starting in the fall with e-learning, as we discussed, but we decided it was too ambitious to think that we could commit now to opening, uh, after Labor Day. And, and so what we instead indicated that, that we would be opening, uh, up the road with further notice. In that intervening time, uh, so, so we issued, uh, this plan on the 17th. And, and, and in that intervening time, I'm sure all of you have been keeping track of what's going on around the country. Uh, I saw, uh, one thing, for example, that, that to, to get the first million cases in the United States, to document a case of COVID, took 90, 93 days, I believe it was. Maybe it's 99. I think it was 93 days. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. We are now adding a million cases every 17 days in the United States. And, and, and so all of a sudden, we, we are, are in an amazing surge in this country. And we live in Chicagoland. Actually, our, our, uh, uh, our infectious rates are pretty low right now in Evanston, although they have been gradually increasing in the last seven days. We know that Illinois is increasing, but we mostly know we do not live in a bubble. We have people coming in and out from different states. Uh, we have a lot of people who, uh, would be returning even this week, uh, from Wisconsin and Michigan, for example. We know that. Uh, we, we know that, that, that people are flying in and out of, uh, O'Hare all the time, and we know that our employees don't all live in Evanston, and in fact, live dozens of miles away, even in other states. And what we are, are, are wanting to prevent is that we become a super-spreader, that we bring people into this community, into, under this roof, and all of a sudden, we have become the super-spreader in Evanston. We've lost a lot of Evanstonians. We've lost a lot of elderly Evanstonians. We lost Hecqypal. And I'm sorry, but we didn't create this pandemic, but we're going to do everything in our power to not be putting people at extra risk. If you have other questions, Marcus and Peter here, uh, Mary and, and Toya are equally as informed about this topic, and, uh, and will be glad to answer any questions. But my recommendation is, uh, to approve now this, this resolution, same resolution, uh, but actually, uh, not for the framework, not for the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. Do we have, uh, questions from Board, the Board? Gretchen? You're on mute.
So much for this using the spacer bar thing. Doesn't always work. I just wanted to go back to the discussion of band. Um, I know we don't normally comment on public comment, um, but it seems to me it falls within this whole reopening plan as well, so, um, I'm not directly responding to any particular comment. I just, I, I wanted to sort of make a few observations, um, about this issue related to band. Number one, I want to say that I am just so appreciative and supportive of our administrators who, um, have been, you know, dealing with this just unprecedented, um, issue of the pandemic and trying to prepare for a school year in our enormous building with our enormous student population, which is wildly diverse in, uh, so many different ways. I just really thank you, all of you, for, for everything you've been doing and trying to do virtually and all that stuff. It's, it's tremendous. And secondly, I want to say, and relatedly, I absolutely and fully support the, um, uh, cautious approach that we're taking. I, you know, it is, um, you know, to say that we ought to open in-person and have, have people in the school subject to the potential risks that are out there, which includes the very real risk of dying, um, it's like playing Russian roulette. I mean, we just, we, you, you can't do, you can't take that kind of risk, even if we think it's small. And, and so I just want to express my appreciation for that. Um, I, I think it's the right approach. And, but, but also relatedly, let me say, nobody wants to do it this way. We would love to be in-person. And, and to suggest otherwise, I think is wrong, too. So I just want to preface what I'm about to say with that. With respect to band, I, I have to make the point that I think, yes, the governor did make things very confusing, by sort of singling out sports in this way. There is separate guidance from the state that relates to in-person classes, and that separate guidance has a whole section related to band, and how difficult band is, because you're blowing on instruments and so forth. But, but that section and that, those, that guidance relates to a decision to have in-person school, which we are not doing. And that guidance also assumes that band is a class, which of course it is. Marching band, however, we've handled as an extracurricular activity, and that's where I think the confusion arises. So, uh, yeah, my personal view is the governor should add some clarity around that. Uh, but I suspect he's not inclined, because he hasn't done so already, and, um, you then tread into difficult territory with everything else. So, uh, you know, we don't. So I think it makes it confusing. I think it makes it confusing for us. I think it makes it confusing for parents and our students. I also want to add that I was in the marching band. I played the clarinet. It was tremendous. I loved it. And I am so, so sympathetic to the concerns of our students who are missing out on this opportunity. And I am also extraordinarily sympathetic to this idea that, um, the arts and band, um, sometimes appear, despite best intentions, to get short shrift when, um, put next to sports. And I, I think, you know, frankly, this is a little bit on the governor and, and not us. And it's, it's too bad, but I, I, I think we're sort of stuck. I would also say, though, that, um, as Dr. Witherspoon has already pointed out, we have this opportunity to regroup in the spring, and hopefully we'll be able to do so then. I think also, depending on how things unfold, um, this fall, um, and depending on the governor and, the governor and Department of Health. and, uh, the governor and Department of Health directives, um, we should keep our eyes on that, and maybe there will be an opportunity to make some changes before the snow flies, which would be not a great time to be marching with instruments outdoors. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to chime in on that. I, I'm not sure there's much we can do right now, but I'm appreciative of the comments and the work that we're doing around all of this. So, thanks, guys.
Are there other comments?
I have a, I have a question, because it is so confusing, and I'm right there with Gretchen. Um, things keep changing, like every second, and I anticipate more changes coming up, um, over the next day or so. Um, but as it stands right now, are the fall sports, the practices, have they been suspended? Are we still practiced?
Uh, so the governor, uh, listed only a handful of fall sports, uh, that he directed could continue. To my knowledge, every high school in the, in the state is following that directive. Uh, and I believe today, August tenth, would be, uh, the first day, uh, that the practice, Marcus, if you recall for sure, uh, but, but basically, so the practices for-
This was the target day. This was the target day. I don't know if we met it or not, but this was the date that we were set.
All right. Because I, I, I too, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm a sports mom, but I am also thinking about how this affects, um, and evidently, the governor's not. But when the inequities that are, um, so blatant here, um, when some students are able to participate, and I know we'll all say that it's a, you know, it's the process of making sure that there's safe recommendations and, um, more, more recommendations that, that would not, um, allow for us to be, to follow the protocols. I get it. I think, um, as keepers over students, um, and their, their education and, and their activities, it is very challenging for us to, um, to live out his, you know, what he's saying has to be lived out when we are faced with, um, so many different varieties and, and a diverse options for our students, right? So not every student will take part in, in sports, not every student will be a part of the band, but when we find students that find their spark and we have to remove that for every right reason, because it's hard, it's hard to do. Um, I, I just want everyone, including our parents and our students, to know that it is not easy, and we are interpreting, um, what has come down from the state, from the governor. Um, but I just also want us to be reminded that it affects each student so differently, and there's trauma behind all of this. Um, and, and so, you know, I think about my own niece, who was not an athlete, who was smart, who was, you know, she kept herself, um, she found herself in the band, which led to other things. Um, so I'm, I'm just thinking about those students that, um, you know, that are not always, um, out in front or active or in that sort of arena that has been approved for whatever the participation is this fall. So it's, it's hard, it's hard, it's very hard, it's challenging.
You know, you really make a good point, uh, Ms. Parsons. First of all, I will reiterate, we could make a local decision to put a hundred and sixty band students on the, on the field. We could do that. But, uh, it's not like the governor prohibited that. But he also has a whole lot of other guidelines about social distancing and how many groups of fifty and, and, and on and on and on. Um, and, and, and so we are trying to, to thread the needle. But I will also point out, our chem phys kids can't get into their labs. Our, our math teams have to do everything virtual. It's not only the arts are banned, it's everything, you know, uh, the, the Evanstonian, they, they can't come in and, and put out a newspaper, they have to do everything virtually. So it, it's not targeting any one group. And in fact, I, I, I've alluded to it, we had made a decision not to have any sports in the fall. We weren't going to be, to have groups of students coming in at all until we had a better handle on, 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 on this virus. And it was only because of that directive that, that we went along with it, not because we all of a sudden thought it was fine to start getting, bringing groups of kids together. We've added two requirements to the sports that are not being universally applied. These are ETHS. One is, every support needs to create pods, and not a hundred and sixty, they need to create pods of no more than twenty-five athletes. We're even hiring more coaches, or at least supervisors, uh, to, to, to supervise them, because you not only have to be in a pod of twenty-five, you can't mix pods. And this is trying not to spread the virus. And hopefully, if, well, not hopefully if it happens, if it happens, hopefully to contain it. If they go to away competitions, which we weren't approving any travel anywhere, and we haven't, uh, but, but, you know, because they've been, made an exception, um, they can only put one pod on a bus. Normally, we put fifty or more kids on a bus. Now we'll have to get double buses because, because of those exceptions that we actually disagree with. But we are trying to thread the needle, and I just want to remind everybody, it's not, it, 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 it's not a band or sports. It's every club, it's SOAR, uh, it, it, it's book club, it's every club and group and activity and curricular, uh, uh, trying to work that every student is doing. We have kids, and I will go back to chem phys, who do amazing research projects that, that help them get amazing scholarships. They're going to have to do that virtually, and they cannot come in and use our lab. So I just want to point out that there is a huge consistency here, and thank you for pointing that, that out, that, uh, that this is, this is tough.
Yeah, and it's not about band or sports, it's about the diversity of students we have here at ETHS and our, um, ability to try to keep them as safe as possible. So I think that is, um, that was my point, um, in making and remembering to always think about that through an equity lens. It's not just about those two areas. Thank you.
I really appreciate that, um, Monique, because we are, we're in this situation, as I said earlier, that is, um, very unique, very odd. Um, I, I also really want to say that I support the district's plan to, to go fully remote for, um, reasons of trying to keep our students and our staff and our community safe. Um, I always think about how we can do this in an equitable way and what students are going to be impacted the most. I know that for every, everybody, we heard some of the comments read this morning, um, and, you know, we've been hearing from people, and I, and I've had my own personal experiences, I have to say, this has really been a challenging time, it's really hard, and, um, and it's, it's, it's just tough. I mean, we won't be able to get this time back. So all of our lives will be impacted and have been impacted and will continue to be impacted. Um, so I just think that's, um, I just think we're, we're just going to really struggle and adjust, making adjustments and, and trying to help people get beyond and get past this. Um, but it's also important for us to think about how we support students who may, who may struggle, who we know historically have struggled in our district. Um, so our equity work really, um, has to kind of take, uh, uh, take a, uh, take a center here. We have to really think about what we, what we can do, what is our responsibility for our, our students. Um, and yes, we, we, we think about when we can start some of these programs again. Um, we have some guidelines, like maybe thinking about spring, but the reality is, um, we just have to watch the numbers. We have to see what's, what's coming down. And I, I, I think what, what makes me so anxious about this time is that I have no idea what's ahead. And so that's really, really hard and really, it's, it's hard to plan, it's hard to anticipate, it's hard to say for sure this is what we're going to do in the spring, because we don't know what the spring is going to look like. Um, so we have to be flexible, and for many of us, not having control puts us more in this state of disequilibrium. And I think that as a, as a district, that's where we are. Um, but really, this plan to go remote, and this, um, as we know, is a similar plan from every district, pretty much, just about every district in our community, um, because schools are looking at this and some of the data. Toya posted some data about, uh, children. Um, according to CNN, more than ninety-seven thousand children have tested positive over the past two weeks across the country. Um, this is according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. So we know this can impact students, we know this, and it would be irresponsible for us to move forward, to put our students at risk. And so I appreciate, I know it's hard, and it's hard for me, um, because it's hard to interrupt the lives of our community and what we are doing. It's hard. But I really don't think we have a choice in this matter.
And if I may just add optimism, and like many of you, I am the eternal optimist. Um, I, I like the fact that Dr. Fauci thinks that we very likely will have a vaccine around the first of the year. I like the fact that they earlier told us that the second wave, although, I, I, we're still the first wave, but the second wave would probably peak during the flu season in, in the fall and, and winter. And I am highly optimistic that when we get over that, that, that surge period of when, if and when there is a vaccine, that we will not only get a spring, um, season going, but there will indeed be a marching band season in the spring. We will get our seniors back here to enjoy their, their school on site, uh, well in time for their graduation, uh, and that, uh, that we will start to see that we're putting this plague, if you will, behind us. So, um, I know nothing more than all the rest of you know. But I must tell you, I am highly optimistic that come spring, we are going to, as a nation, have turned the corner. Other nations have done it. We know it can be done, you can turn the corner. And with a vaccine, I think that we can be highly optimistic that we will see all the things we're sacrificing today brought back in just their full bloom in the spring. And I recommend approval of the, of the, uh, resolution.
Okay. All right. So, um, that's where we are. Thank you, Eric, for bringing us back to the agenda, because I was glad. Okay, so we are, um, approval of the COVID nineteen reopening plan resolution. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved. Second.
Um, roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monself?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
DeTarrich?
Yes.
Davich Williams?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, and I do have the right agenda now because I printed it. Um, approval of budget amendments from July first, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. I just want to get a little clarification on a point is, um, is Mary with us? I, I don't see her now.
Oh, she was with us. What happened to Mary?
I know there was- I could probably answer your question.
Yeah.
Maybe, oops, sorry, spacebar again. Um, I just wanted, you know, Mary and I had had an exchange about that line item that, um, talks about this, you, you're nodding, Eric, you know what I mean? It's the, um, it's that school board thing, it looks like the school board has some sort of retirement and sick leave, and we do not emphatically, we do not, we are one hundred percent volunteer. And I just wanted that clarification for anybody who actually looks this deep into the packet at these budget amendments to understand what's going on. So Eric, if you could just clear that up for everybody.
I, I will. First of all, let me reiterate, this is not only a completely volunteer board, uh, they not only get no form of compensation, but it costs them to be on the board, you know, whether it takes them away from their family or their work, uh, uh, whether they're in their car driving to things, uh, whatever, whatever it may be. Uh, so you're exactly right. Uh, this is trying to, to once again, clean up another area that we discovered in the budget. Uh, years ago, uh, a lot of things were lumped under school board, the idea the school board passes the money and, and whatever. But then we get things, you know, like retirement benefits and that, and, and, and it's so misleading. So what, what, um, Mary is doing is asking, there you are, Mary, but I'll finish.
I'm here, sorry.
Asking to amend the budget, uh, to, to move that into a, that, those expenditures, uh, into another area, uh, that, that more, yeah, true, the, the board approves all money, but, but this is not board expenses. And so we're going to move it in, into a, 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 another part of the budget that, that is more accurately a name.
Yeah, I'm sorry, are you talking about the amendment in the, um, the ten thousand dollar amendment, Eric, for the board of ed expenses?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I lost my connection, and then we all know we had that waiting room issue, so sorry about that, of course.
You're all right, I explained it, unless there's another question, we're clear, Mary, we don't have to do it twice.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for explaining that, and, um, we have a motion on the table, uh, it's been moved in second, correct? Could we have a roll call, please?
Livingston?
Yes.
Monself?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
DeTarrich?
Yes.
Davich Williams?
Yes. Thank you. The next item is approval of CLIC and liability workers' compensation coverages for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and there's an attachment in the packet. Can we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monself?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
DeTarrich?
Yes.
Davich Williams?
Yes. The next item is the consent agenda, which includes resolution and memorandum authorizing sale of property. Um, approval of fiscal year twenty-one district plan for ISBE, approval of minutes from July thirteen closed session meeting and July thirteen regular meeting, uh, release for public information minutes from closed sessions, January twentieth, twenty twenty, to June twenty twenty, and the destruction of closed session tapes, treasurer's report from June twenty twenty, approval of bills and personnel agenda, appointments to staff- and personnel agenda, appointments to staff, certified support staff, nutrition services and intern. Change of status, education, stipend, overloads, mentors, staff honorar, honorariums, instructional coaches, leaves of absence for support staff, maternity exempt and certified and resignation certified and support staff.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monself?
Yeah.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
The Terich?
Yes.
Davids Williams?
Yes. All right, we are at item number twelve. Does anybody have any old or new business to present?
Well, I don't know that it's old or new, but I just wanted to again thank um the administration and everyone at E T H S who's worked so hard on um this, you know, reopening plan and really put our students first in trying to figure out what to do and, and keep them safe, but do as much as we can to keep their education moving and their social emotional wellbeing at the forefront and equity at the forefront. It just, you know, we weren't, we didn't create this problem. This is not E T H S's problem, this is an education's problem. This is a broader, you know, world altering event. And uh, I think our team has done an outstanding job. Um, and I'm just really, really um grateful to all of you. And I know it's exhausting and hard and not what we want, but it is, um, you've done a really great job. So I just want to thank you again for everything you're, you've done and are doing and will be doing, starting probably next a minute from now, but certainly next Monday when the kids come back. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Pat. It is very true that every single piece of what has to be done and planned, every decision just has so many ramifications. And I know that the administration and the staff has been um doing and thinking about this day and night, I know that. I'm sure this has kept many of you, if not all of you, up. Um, so really um, words of appreciation, I'm not even sure that, that, that it, it fits because it's so, it, it's just really hard to express. Um, and um, and we continue because things will continue to surface or something else or something that we haven't planned for or thought about. Uh, one more piece I'd like to, to bring up. I know that at our last meeting, we talked about um S R Os and how we were going to um address that. Um, and because we've been working so hard, I know the administration has been working so hard, rightfully so, planning for um August seventeenth. Um, we, we will delay that conversation um until September. Dr. Witherspoon, is there more that you'd like to say about that?
Uh, no, uh, the board, you had asked us uh, for a little bit more information and we are assembling that and we'll have that for you as well.
So we'll have a more extensive conversation. Um, and it is important that we do that as a board. Um, so we will have a more extensive conversation as we do um looking at every component and aspect of this uh, this question. All right, anything else?
Pat, quickly, I want to also thank the administration and the teachers. I mean, this, I, you know, just as a person over another organization not too far from the high school, um, I know the stress that it, it leads to trying to open right. Um, I know what my leadership team has gone through since March, since we shut down. I can only imagine what the administration at E T H S has, has been just dealing with um since March. Um, but then when we finally opened our doors, you know, the way that we could at the Y, um, I realized how difficult and challenging that really is. It's one thing to talk about it strategically, it's another thing to operationalize it. And, and so I just want our teachers and our staff and our faculty to know that we support you one hundred percent. This is not going to be easy next week. Um, and so, you know, while you think that, you know, it's like making difficult or easy decisions or nobody's satisfied with any decision that you're going to make, just know that I appreciate all of you, we appreciate all of you. And I know for sure that um the stress will continue to climb, even when you're teaching online. This is not going to go away. So I, I, I think our, our community needs to understand that, that it doesn't get easier. Um, it becomes more challenging, um, online is not easy. Um, and definitely bringing our, our children into the high schools is, is not easy, nor is it the right decision. So I'm, I'm totally in support of what the, the administration team has decided. Um, but I am continuing to pray for our community um, as well as our leaders, our teachers that are moving the minds of our students and especially for the youth in our community. I'm not responsible for this, but I apologize. This has been a disruption in your life, I can't even imagine. Um, so I am just simply um, um, I don't know, this is deep, this is more than a notion. So know that no decision is an easy one. Um, and know that our students, we know that this is affecting you on every level. So this is not business as usual, and I don't want you to think that these conversations are casual or that this board meeting is a casual thing. This is a very difficult process that we're in that none of us asked for. So students, please have a wonderful year, do the best that you can, but most importantly, reach out um, to any caring adult so that you can get the help and the support that you need to get through this because we need you to get through this, we desperately need you to, so that's it.
Well, thank you, Monique, I really, really appreciate that and, and agree with everything you just said. It's really, this is so difficult, the time is so hard. We'll be talking about this for the rest of our lives. And, and really for the students, and it just is such an incredible disruption that you won't be able to get back or make right. So um, and I agree, I am really sorry to see this happen to you at this time. It is really, really unfortunate. It's not, you know, I didn't make it happen, but it's just, it is truly not fair. So um, we really want you to do everything you can do to take care of yourself because we want you to be healthy on the other side. We want you to be healthy physically and as healthy emotionally as possible when we get to the other side. And, and if you um see what I said to the faculty when we um put together our video for the opening day, I'm starting to think about and talk about the other side. And for me, one of the reasons I'm doing that is because I, I have to believe that there will be another side, even though I don't know when that will happen. I have to also believe that we will come out of this better than we did when we walked into it. That things will be better. Of course, we'll, we know, as we talked earlier, we'll know how to do things differently and how to do things better and more efficiently, because we're all good at Zoom now. So we'll know all, we'll, we'll know how to do things that way differently. But we'll also have, I think, I'm hoping, just a deeper appreciation for each other, for relationships. We'll be able to give each other grace, we'll just be different folks. This will impact us, I want it to. So I, I will say to, to the teachers and to the, and to the students, let this impact you. Think deeply about this time and what's happening. If you are, it's so inclined, keep journals. Here's mine, it's big and fat, it's really big fat journal. So keep a journal, just write stuff, write it down, write down your thoughts. And, and keep talking to somebody who, who can help you process this. And please, please, please take care of yourself and each other. So unless there are further comments, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. I don't know that we need a second, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
Stay well. Bye.
Yes.
Thank you, bye-bye.